Good evening, welcome to the Superior Community Schools Board of Education Meeting for March 38th. This meeting is called the Board. We begin with flag allegiance. Mr. Peabody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We will begin tonight with a presentation from the Wall Street High School.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about what's going on at the high school this school year. I told Mr. Weim we've got about thirty-two slides, should only take about forty-five minutes.
Four hundred and five minutes.
Yes. So, first thing I want to touch on, there's a few programs that we're not going to go into a lot of detail about tonight. One of them will be back before you hear it in the coming weeks. So just some of the things that are going on, and we have one program we're going to focus on a little bit today to talk about that. Some of the big pieces we're tackling curriculum-wise this year are, in English Language Arts are English ten, English eleven classes are implementing the basic units, and working through that throughout the school year as part of a sixth fall curriculum alignment piece. We're also following on the heels of what's taken place at the middle level where we have pilot pieces this year, and in combination with ZEMR and LHS are highlighting new curriculum in Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. And a big piece with those, and the third piece I have up on the slide of our next generation science thing is that they're all driving at some changes in instructional practices that we're working on. It's changing the voice of the class to be a little more student-friendly. And, you know, the picture there is of one of the math classes that they're just working in some groups, talking through the math problems, struggling with it a little bit. Teachers checking in on those groups, bringing them back together. English classes we see confering taking place with individual students about their writing and reading. And so those are some kind of some instructional shifts that are taking place aligned to some curriculum changes. We are also, with that, continuing to work on identifying and breaking down the curriculum core standards and making sure that we're doing that with the elevating those classes and looking at what are the essential skills kids need to know to be able to do and understand that's the KED reach work that's up there. We've had a focus on our learning communities, our PLCs that meet every weekend or school on Tuesdays to have that work supportive, the KED work, instructional strategies work supportive, do some good conversation around what students are doing in the class. And then finally, in the last year, talked about the new piece of having learning coaches in the building, and our learning coaches are supporting all of this work, especially in the area of the D and C now. And that has been a huge part of our focus throughout the year. I'll be perfectly honest, I spend my time with the learning coaches, attending PLCs and trying to get their classes, especially math, which is a large number of them, that I'm working through the evaluation process, and I'm giving them feedback to help us through. The other piece that's going on, and the piece we're going to focus on tonight, is some of our special education services. Last spring, Mrs. Tindall, myself, at the time, Mrs. Zeman, sat down with our carpet chair, Mrs. Miller, and said, "We want to take a look at how we're working to meet our students' needs." They then brought a couple other teachers on board in that conversation, and really decided we needed to shift to meet our students' needs in special education. And, I mean, we put in a couple of bases that identify needs that are special departments, and what, a month? Going through IEPs, looking at how can we best meet our students' needs where they're at in their educational setting and what they need to get to. We identified a couple teachers would best be served in a teacher consultant. Where they're not having kids directly in instruction in their class, but they're pushing into multiple rooms to provide support to kids where they need to be, following up on kids who don't need as much support, but looking to get them the support that's appropriate. And then we continued with the other two tiers of our department as resourceful teachers. So two of those continue to team teach, and so they're going into a classroom where we have a larger population of students that need support, and they're providing support to those students in that class and meeting those combination needs. We also have two, and this is a new piece to this law with teacher consultant, two teachers serving, excuse me, in an intervention role. Because one of the things we identified is, we didn't really have any area in which we were supporting, working towards students' goals in their areas of deficiencies. And so we put in two new courses. We have a high school English support and a high school math support class. Mrs. Murphy's going to speak a little bit about the English class, but students throughout the day, instead of taking a lecture, have this support class. And one of the things is, and she's going to share some results of how the class is going with in just a moment, one of the things is it's really driving those, that smaller populations, their needs. So they're getting their needs met, and she's going to talk about some of the girls that we've seen there. On the building side of it, when we look at our building data, our special ed population runs about thirty percent behind our general ed population in the proficiency and state testing. So, you know, if we have, you know, thirty-eight percent proficient math, we have about eight, actually six percent proficient special ed. And so trying to have a piece that's addressing their needs to fill in the gaps that were created over time in some basic skills, being addressed on top of taking that algebra, geometry class that they had created. And so to talk a little more about what that looks like is I'm your producer, Mrs. Amy Murphy. She is one of the two intervention teachers, and I'm not sure, talk a little about her program.
Okay, I have the privilege of teaching the English where we work on the reading and writing goals. So I have approximately had up to fifty-five students in my class either first semester or this semester currently, or a combination of them both. So my results for my students' growth currently, thirty-eight of my students have shown growth. I've broken it down between one grade level of growth, all the way up to eight grade levels of growth so far. Four of which, I'm sorry, six of which who actually made it to high school level. So I was pretty proud of these results in here. I've broken them up, they're shaded a little bit. How it's set up is the lighter blue, our students who flip because of the curriculum and just their schedules were able, and the students' needs, some students need both math and reading goals. So those students, we worked out that they will do one week in my reading class, one week in math, and then they flip back and forth throughout the semester. So those are the students that flip, and the ones that are darker are the ones that stay only in my class throughout the semester. The topic that I've shown are those that, the time that they spent with me from first semester, second semester only, which obviously we're only halfway through this semester, and then those that have been with me since the very beginning. Those are the students that have not shown growth yet by grade level, they've shown growth within the grade level, but not enough to move them up. And then comparing that to the students who actually showed some type of growth. And again, those are shaded with those that flip, that go one week on, one week off, and those that stay just strictly in the classroom. I have invited two of my students that kind of had some changes in my class that I wanted them to experience. So I have Zach Jolly and Frank May. Come on in, Zach. Zach is actually one of our flippers. He does the math intervention as well as the reading and the writing. And then Frank May is in my class for basically writing interventions where his need was at for my class, and I'll let them share.
Okay. I just want to say that Mrs. Murphy is a great teacher, and she's done such a great job. I had to write a few things down, so I made sure that I included a lot of stuff. This year has been a great experience for me because I have English first semester, and then I was switching to a different class, and then that semester, they did a lot of like going tiers, the work that we were reading, fight evidence for the text. And it wasn't for Mrs. Murphy telling us, teaching us how to do that, I would not have been ready for English eleven, I would not have been prepared. I like, Mrs. Murphy does this like one-on-one, so you know, you get, it's kind of a small class, but it's good because I think that we could build that one-on-one where we can talk and we can, you know, improve. And Mrs. Murphy makes learning fun, like it is, it's interesting, it's like, I like to read now and I like to improve because I need to help, you know, strive for increase and growth and everything. I've increased, I've increased to a high, I've increased to the high school reading level of all my classes with Mrs. Murphy.
Mrs. Murphy's a real good teacher. Like, he's, I have cast on, and that's basically helping prepare me for the world and everything. And all of it, just writing, making presentations, doing all this, and either doing it by yourself or with her. And with the writing that I do, I never really, I kind of never really liked writing. I kind of just sat there and put a bunch of money. And Mrs. Murphy kind of helped me try to slow her more into writing, more into writing. And I would never have rather been a good writer or exceeded writing if not for Mrs. Murphy or the program law. And the whole program, I think it really helped me out in writing and trying to succeed in two of those.
So Zach talked about the one-on-one piece that takes place in, I mentioned what's going on in English and math. So what Zach was referencing really is the conferings taking place, and it's not only taking place in the support class, but in the ELA classes as well. And so is having a chance to go in all of the different classrooms and see what's going on. I went into Mrs. Murphy's room first time, and I went and observed the program and seeing how things are going. And a few weeks in, and students are, you know, there's half a dozen students in the room, they're reading their books independently, and she's calling us, and we know who we're best, and they're sitting there, and the students are answering questions about the work, or what they're reading, they're developing reading comprehension skills. See the same thing with the writing component is, they're working on the writing pieces, and she's doing that confering. And unbeknownst to her, because she's going through other trainings, going to an English classroom, and students are doing some independent reading, and the teacher's working around clipboard and confering, and the students can say exactly. And so that's one of the instructional shifts that are taking place. Talking with Murphy, I was like, "Of course I'm referring, that's best practice, I don't know, I've given my master's degree as a reading specialist." And then, you know, we had the same thing going on in the classroom. And so it's really neat to see those shifts taking place at the high school, and it's part of the reason I thought this would be a good one to bring forward and share with you tonight. I did live off thirty-two slides away, so thank you for that.
Yes, that's good.
I think that's, that reading and writing, that's all we see as we move through this whole system is that, how do we engage them, how do we get them to read and like to read and then write?
It was a good job there, in this class, and seeing that happen a little bit more in traditional classes as well.
Well, and I think bringing in the capstone too, because that capstone is a lot of communication and then articulating in the written part.
And really driving a lot of the public speaking skills that are, and the writing skills in that program. They maybe don't present themselves in, in the general classes throughout, you know, maybe we focus on the reading literature and reading information, and there it really starts to, how do I?
It's nice too, because what you just did reaffirmed for at least me and ensured the rest of us that we focus so much on reading and writing at the young ages, that it's good to hear that if someone gets through or gets to you, you can still bring them back, and they can still succeed. I mean, that's fantastic. I think it's easier for a lot of people to say, "Well, if they didn't get it, then they'll never get it," and that you're proving that's wrong.
Well, it's like, when we talked in December about, said, "Okay, where are we?" And she said, "I have kids that have made a year's growth," and, you know, or two years, and I said, "That's amazing," because some of those kids are only with her for half of the semester because they were going to math class, and the math class has seen some similar results.
You really had one student with eighteen years improvement?
We did, it was absolutely exciting. And there was a couple times along the progress monitoring where he got stuck, and then we kind of zeroed in on what the issue was, and kept going, and I'm like, "Oh my gosh." But I think of it as patching the road. They have the skills, they're just missing the pieces along the way. Some are missing more than others, and so that's why I think I can move them that many levels, because it's just finding those little areas and then showing them and building them that confidence to drop down those walls. And, you know, that's why I selected the students that I did, not only are they both made it to the high school level, but they, it was the attitude that they came in, the classroom went, they didn't want to be there, they didn't want to do this. I stole it, everything I do in there, I tell them a purpose, and I tell them they have the choice, you can get better or not, but I'm going to put this before you. And then they just finally jumped on board, and then they're constantly making the comments, you know, to their peers, to other staff members. Like, "I hated writing, I hated reading, I'm fine, I like it now." I never read a book entirely, now they're reading an entire book, and I, that's the fun part. That's what gets you going the next day, it's pretty exciting.
Well, thank you for you two for coming in, cheering for this, and for actually committing to be better. You guys had a choice too. You guys were open to it, and you went with it, and, great job.
It's always scary talking to people.
I'm just listening to you guys come up and talk, and thinking about how good that has to feel, to have a voice come out and to get those skills. And even more, I thought of how good it has to feel as a teacher to realize that you just changed somebody's life.
And I'm getting that feedback from my peers too, from their, to class teachers. They're getting more from, for sure, they're seeing that, so it's really nice to collaborate with them and ask them what they're missing.
You mean they're seeing more help there from the students?
Yeah, they're getting that, even though I don't, I'm not necessarily front-loading the curriculum, obviously, you know, reading skills and reading skills. I'm kind of the same as you, go through in some degree, but it's just, mine was the confidence and just the practicing and making it as fun as possible, and kind of opening up those areas, and then I start challenging them to try something different after they, we built that trust in the classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, I guess someone called up the comments board, I think, and we'll move on to the reports. We have the teaching learning technology committee, Mrs. Peabody, you have to give the report tonight.
Okay, Mr. Keller, I missed something when you told me. We met on Friday, March twenty-fourth, and the first presentation we heard was from Mr. Lindsay, thank you, Mr. Lindsay. He updated us, of course, the word legal comes with both of these, but the graduation, the major graduation requirement change that I understood was, if a student chooses a vocational career path and they go out to the, the vocational base, decrease to one of the world languages. So then it had one credit in world language, and then their credit takes their vocational credit. And then I also learned from Mr. Lindsay that we have world languages classes off online, some of our students are speaking German and...
Japanese, Latin.
Japanese, Latin, to me, that required it. So I was very supportive of that, I thought that was a, for those that want to do the still trade career path. Then the second major change was the alternate, alternative diploma track, which started on Buxton's program. And there's a committee that will be formed for students in this program. There'll be a teacher, counselor, building level administrator, district administrator overseeing curriculum and instruction. And it's an academic exception committee, so graduates wouldn't have to have less credit hours, but they would still be able to graduate from our high school program. So that was what we discussed, and just, we were concerned in making sure the online foreign language, that they, they do meet the standards if they want to pursue a college education, and we can talk about that. That seems to be, some kids just learn it in hurry than others. That was the graduation requirements, is there any questions on that? This is the first reading of that. I missed anything this time?
You got it all.
I got it, yeah. Now the next one is the district parent involvement, which has been changed to family engagement. That's the term for that now versus parent involvement. It's through the title loan program, and we mainly the changes were the verbiage. From family engagement, it's no longer parent involvement, and then we made a change, the superintendent or designated shall ensure that the title loan participating schools develop, and then it's parent family, parent family throughout this whole wording of this. So there's a couple of changes, annual meeting throughout the year, flexible meeting times and activities will be designed. Parents and families, a lot of parents and families. So that was just some of the verbiage that was changed. That was presented, it was by Casey Allen, the supervisor of school enrollment grant conference, and Mrs. Brad, Michelle was there with us that morning. What else was there? Two of the, two of the topics we talked about, and included in that is our, our title, not of our schools, our title loan schools, and just two of the plans on involving families and parents in all of our schools. We signed our title loan grant.
Special thanks to Mrs. Allen, who's done a great job, really making the dummy piece a bit more robust as a requirement of the grant. We have to engage parent groups specifically and getting feedback on the intervention that we're administering to kids and families. And typically that's been limited to district pack level feedback as a needed requirement. Casey had an idea, she was here to take that to the golden level, PACs, and so certainly it's been made a bit more robust by her in doing that. It's a lot of time, and you know, those groups and kids, we've done some special work for her.
So our, our title loan schools, I shouldn't worry about that much. But there's still plans for the non-title ones. Right here.
Next, we're going to move into our act numbers, we have a consent grouping. So you know, I would like to pull all of number three for some discussion and approval. Would anybody like anything else for approval, consent grouping? So, what we have is a consent grouping and the approval of the minutes of the March ninth regular reading, approval of the minutes of the March sixteenth work session, second reading and adoption of board policies three, two, one, seven, four, two, one, seven, five, seven, seven, two, seven, two, one, seven, six, four, two, three, seven, and ten.
Motion.
I'll second.
A motion, and it's not supported, Mrs. Peabody.
Aye, aye.
All right.
Aye.
Mr. Bush.
Aye.
Mrs. Peabody.
Aye.
Mrs. Peabody, motion carries. Now what I would like to do is begin with number two, two, six, one, the current family engagement. On page three, if you look at J, we had some discussion, and maybe it may be a capture, or maybe I misunderstood, maybe it's just going to go into administrative guidelines, but we're talking about including, offering training on literacy support and technology and harms of copyright privacy. I would like to include in the technology area, the ethical use of technology and social media and the protection of personal data. Those to be very specific things in that training. Something?
Ethical use of technology.
Yeah, ethical use, ethical use of technology and social media, and the protection of personal data. Do we have to vote on this, or can I go to the next one, and then we vote? I vote around you, or, because I pulled them.
Since you pulled them, you need to go on.
He's on, okay, so then. Yeah, do we have any other discussion on this? Any questions?
I just have a question, when you were in the meeting, in C.
What page?
First page.
Page three, C.
We just passed meaning, the definition of meaningful. Meaningfully, well, that's, you know, that's why I shouldn't have that word. Be meaningful, meaningfully involved.
Are you questioning here?
We should discuss that.
Yeah, what's the definition of it?
That's the warning of the law.
Is the learning of the law?
Oh, it's the law.
That's correct. Okay. We're all set. We talked about that.
Thank you, any other?
All right, that's in the law.
So that, do you want to just do policy twenty-two, sixty-one, point oh one?
Yes, on that.
Just separate, amend it, and then, so I'll make an amendment, I'll make a motion that we accept with the changes as discussed.
That's right.
For first reading.
Vote for it.
I got a motion in for, Mrs. Bush.
Yep.
Mr. Noah.
Aye.
Mrs. Noah.
Aye.
Mrs. Peabody.
Aye.
Here's fifty-four, sixty graduation requirements, and it speaks to, if you look on page fourteen, well, thank you, you're at page three of eight, I'm sorry. And it just speaks to that world language connection, we talked about it. What we have here is Spanish AV, French AV, and I thought we were just going to have world language on there.
I don't have a copy, but that was what we discussed in the meeting, was, was on the ultimate diploma track, instead of specifying the three languages. So we offered the district to reduce that to world language and keep it open, going back to Mrs. Peabody's comment about two primary formats. It can be, it could be German, we have students already taking other options and have something to discuss, and just adding that as the two credits. have something to discuss and, and, I'll just add that as the two credits indicating, a world language indicating one year world language. That way we don't run afoul of they take German or take Japanese or take Mandarin Chinese and the test is, that still needs to require their law. And with the vocational piece that's built in there, it needs to.
So the vocational piece always only one year, but you have two.
It is because it's a minimum of two credits and each semester is a credit, same with the world language, so that's referencing credits at the verbiage. So I believe we could, we could just say world language, strike Spanish, read, strike those three specific languages, just world language, two credits.
Just like I'm being. It would be sincerely, or something like that.
Yes, that's what we did.
So, we just didn't strike it twice. This is having to be taken first.
Yeah, it's not each seven, right?
Get somebody. Any other question on the policy?
Um, a motion to amend the, um, graduation requirements based on the discussion.
To approve the first reading has.
Approve for free and.
Regarding world language.
Supporter? Mrs. Peabody.
Yes.
Mrs. Nella.
Aye.
Mr. Nella.
Hi.
Mrs. Bush.
Aye.
Good. That takes us to board member education topics. Are there any other board members who would like to discuss?
It's raining, it's snowing, it's the kitchen, tomorrow, everybody needs to go more. Except those of us who can't talk.
Well, I just want to thank Mr. Lindsay, I learned a lot last Friday morning and, um, thank you for coming to know me and thank you, Mrs. Murphy, and all the students again, thank you today.
They did a nice job.
Yeah, they were, they were being nervous, they were, so. Um, the only thing I have is I saw today in our local city of Ramsey, Michigan, we may be anticipating more changes of the, and then the vocational thing. It was in the house today and those particular ones that I'd be. But in that, everyone that's going away on spring break, have a wonderful time and safe travels.
And Mrs. Peabody, anybody else?
I want to thank Mr. Lindsay and Mrs. Murphy as well. One thing that we find, um, at the college level at mine is that, um, it was really a reading, as you saw, and talk to a lot of students making that kind of growth. I don't know the current percentages, but, um, a few years ago, our rates were like only twenty percent of our students came to the college level, reading and writing. And so it's really exciting to hear that this one-on-one and this, this program is working. And I would love to carry these students on and be able to see what happens when they do this at the college level and what, you know, what they do come in at as far as their testing or their ECT or whatever scores, um, they're used at that point. Who knows what's gonna change this, right? Um, so, so it's just really exciting. The variety of reading, you know, it's just so important to get in jobs or in any, any choice that they make as far as the lessons are concerned. So, super exciting for me to hear and I echo everything they said, just see those light bulbs come on. And I love what you said about the missing pieces because we find that so much. You know, when they have a bad third grade year or something, they miss a lot of school and that's just the piece they miss. And so we find that a lot at the college level. They just miss a little piece and just kind of plug that in. So that's, you know, it's just so exciting that you get it and that you talk about that way. So I just really thank you, Mrs. Murphy, to approve.
What's that? Just one thing, well, again, thank you guys. It's always good to see that, you know, we have nothing but, and Mrs. Allen back there too. Thank you for all your time and effort and energy you put into all of these things. Yeah, I, I think in some respects I missed my calling. I would have liked to have had that feeling that you must have had, especially, I mean, not with all of them, but with a student group, eight years, I, I'm astounded by it. I mean, that is major growth. And I hope that your colleagues also get to experience that kind of feeling that you might know you would have gotten from making and helping those kids approve like that. I mean, that's, kudos to you. I mean, that's, well, but as, as Lisa said though, it's, it's knowing what threads the pole and, you know, how to get to and approach that, that individual soon. I mean, you can't, you know, quickly, because these kids that are coming to you, they have to get at the all different parts. And so, I mean, I, I appreciate the fact that you've committed to the program, that you've taken the time to figure this out. And now I hope you can share that with as many people as you can. And the other committee I just wanted to bring up is that, we had Emily here a while ago who talked to us about what the property of Old Warner looked like. And my wife and I went by there the other day. It's disgusting. And it needs to be an Earth Day project, it needs to be a service learning project, it needs to be a Mike Nolan project out there in the weekend with his kids, but it needs to be somebody's project. Because that place is littered with just about anything you can think of. That's the only one I happen to go by and really pay attention to. I can only imagine that the rest of them look pretty similarly. So I do hope that we can have appropriate engages in the kids somehow and teaching them not to act like this. But then again, I probably can't blame just on the kids either on that property because I'm sure that's the subject of all sorts of littering over there. But I think we need to be pretty vigilant because it does look bad and it's quite partly on outside. We have honored society, students that are out in the community doing community service work and all over the county. Yeah. This is one of those things that would be very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right, that takes us to super good comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, great job, Doug, and wonderful work. Um, part of Doug's presentation will, as we talked about, having more focused goal statements. Uh, you're gonna see a presentation from the buildings look very similar to what Doug presented tonight. Very targeted, very focused, um, on particular areas that buildings are working on and based on measurement. So what are our goals? What's the success? Who are the staff and students involved in a particular area? Um, we have a tendency to have a lot of breadth in our presentations, grab a little depth. So as we mentioned in our last fourth session, when we were discussing, uh, district goals, we've got a number of variety of goal statements and we're going to assign each building, you know, what, what goals are applicable to that, their level and area. And you're gonna hear presentations very similar with you, um, heard tonight from Doug in relation to your comment. We are working right now, um, with a couple of different student groups as it relates to assigning kids to each building. Some may or not, some may attend that building, some may not. We want to kind of get some inter-grade level cooperation with what we got litter, the litter issues in the buildings. This is a particularly tough time because of the melt. Um, we get a lot of blowing and a lot of that happening right after the spring comes, wind and rain and often the snow. So we're also working in cooperation with the city to deal with some of our areas that have some shared space and fencing. Fencing is, as you know, includes the small shrub areas and, and, uh, and woods collect a lot of that debris. Had a direct conversation with the chamber who, as you know, hosts the Fourth of July event. And, uh, we're kind of proactively looking at, um, getting more trash barrels and getting kids in advance of that, not just for cleanup, but during the event to kind of walk around and clean up and have more trash receptacles available at both Mont and the Old Warner site. People kind of hard to go around multiple areas. So, um, to their credit, we had quite a discussion after last year's issue with the, um, post-mortem of the Fourth of July event. And, uh, the school really is just a host. We just allow the property to be utilized. Uh, city and chamber, chamber in particular, are the actual sponsor of the event. But we would be naive to think that we should be able to help in some way. We've got a lot of groups, a lot of people, a lot of resources that can help them. So, uh, we can avoid what happened last year, uh, if, if, if at all possible. So, working on all those things that you referenced. It's time to get, to get more proactive on that. Have a safe break everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'll just add that we, lawn maintenance companies that also, that contact them both. When you see something, you take it up, implement it.
And that's already in the contract. So that, that was part of the issue last year with, uh, the company responsible for the cutting of the, we have a contract that we get off the tractor and bring.
Anybody want to adjourn?
Most of them do.
How's your business supported?
I don't know if it's supported. Mrs. Peabody.
Aye.
Mr. Nella.
Aye.
Mr. Nella. Bush.
Aye.
Got what's been right there.